Rob was sending there. So we'll call the meeting to order and we will begin with roll call.
Walters.
Here.
DeVorak?
Here.
Sarchet?
Present.
Vogel?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Item three, approval of agenda, motion to approve, please.
I'll move in a second.
And roll call.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item four, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. When was the list published?
March 31st.
Have we had any written comments received for or against the proposed budget?
No, sir.
And so at this time, we'd have staff provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give a quick presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. So some quick highlights regarding our proposed budget. Total revenue is just over 23 million for fiscal year 24. Total expenses is shy of 28 million. Our budget looks very inflated because of the number of capital projects we're currently working on and planning for next year. So if you take out the $17 million in capital projects planned for next year, you will see that we really have a $10.8 million operating budget. Of that $10.8 billion operating budget, our biggest expense is salary and employee benefits, which accounts for 3.8 billion of that figure. All funds, with the exception of the capital fund, are balanced for next year. And the reason that the capital fund is not balanced is because we have some of the revenue that we are planning those capital projects in the bank already. So we will do the majority of the expenses after July 1st. Just an overview of where the city's money comes from for operating budget. So the biggest revenue source that Polk City has is for property taxes, which accounts for 31% of our revenue. Water and sewer account for 15 and 18%. And we do have some other fees that we collect for. So local option sales tax, road use tax, solid waste recycling, tax increment financing, also TIP, building and housing permits, permit fees, we can have public safety fees, roundout revenue for the city. And then we have miscellaneous revenue, which is like bank interest that we have coming in and some of our agreements for equipment on ourselves and power. So the fiscal year 24 proposed levy rate is $11 per 1,000 assessed, which is the same rate as the current budget year we are in. And I just want to note that Polk City maintains one of the lower city tax levy rates across the Des Moines metro area, specifically the smaller communities. So we are low compared to Carlisle, Edel, these are heights, and I think that's something that this council is very proud of. 2024 operating expenses, so this just shows how the city spends that revenue that we have coming in for operating. Public safety is our biggest expense in our operating budget, accounts for 21%. That includes police, fire, civic defense. Building and housing accounts for 5%. Our library parks budgets are about 4%. Roads, 7%. Economic development, 6%. Outstanding debt payments, 11%. Water, 14%. Sewer, 18%. City hall administration, staff, 6%. And solid waste recycling, 4% of our budget. We have five capital projects planned for the upcoming budget year. City Hall Community Center project, the total cost of construction is about $5.95 million. Total cost of full project is $6.5 million if you use soft costs. Water tower project is a little above $8 million. The North Side Drive intersection alignment and trail project, $2 million. This includes North Side realignment and a trail, multi-use trail from Kiwanis Park to East Vista Lake Drive. We will be doing, we will be constructing some trail gaps next year along Bridge Road for $275,000. Then we have a minor street repair project where we replace some concrete panels throughout the city for $225,000. The budget also includes some capital equipment purchases. So in the budget, we have two new police vehicles that are going to be purchased in fiscal year 24. We have some police lease agreements on other vehicles in the police department. Public Works, we will be replacing two new pickup trucks and purchasing a new concrete trailer. New city staffing additions, the fiscal year 24 budget, we've added a full-time paramedic firefighter position. This was identified in the city staffing. This will be our third full-time paramedic firefighter, our fourth full-time employee in the fire department. We will also be adding a full-time police sergeant, which is identified in fiscal year 25, but we were able to bump that up a year early. That position will be a management position supervising at nighttime. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Where can people find this if they search?
My, the PowerPoint's not on the website, but all of our budget information is located on the website. They can find the graphs that I showed. My full memo is available on there, and then full budget is also there.
It's on the, in the financial reports page under administration.
So pie charts.
Everything.
So you get in the dollar.
Yep.
Yeah. That's good research thing.
Thank you.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed budget? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Back up.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
So we will move on to four. One, resolution 2023-48, adopting the budget, a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorak? Sarchet?
Yes.
Item five, public comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Have we had anyone who's asked to speak?
No, sir.
Right, thank you. Moving on then to item six, consent items, and I'll ask for a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on then to seven, business items. A, first reading of ordinance 2023-5000, mending chapter 165.06 zoning regulations, general regulations. Travis, you have a report?
Yes, so for your consideration tonight, it's an amendment to chapter 165 of the city code. More or less, this, this change is a get the regulations as enforced in writing, so that they're easier to reference. Essentially, we're adding specifically that the maximum peak of an accessory structure in the R1, R1A, R2, and R2A zoning districts cannot exceed 30 feet. And then a few sentences later, the total maximum size of all accessory structures shall not exceed 4,000 square feet in any residential district. That's not a single building, that is, your total accessory structures cannot exceed a maximum of 4,000 square feet. Standard attached garages will not count towards either of the, or will, they will be enforced under the same code. They will not count as 4,000 square feet. It clarifies the maximum peak height as it's already being enforced. And then let's see here. That 4,000 foot, square foot cap, just to put it in perspective, is approximately nine times the size of a standard two-car garage. And it also is in addition to the 30% restriction that already exists in code, which is an accessory building, which is not part of the principal building, shall not occupy more than 30% of the required rear yard and shall not exceed 16 feet and a half in height. So essentially what that means is on a typical R1 lot of approximately 10,000 square feet, that lot is still limited to 840 square feet of accessory structure. The verbiage we're adding is more or less for estate-type lots that exceed well over one acre, where you would get anywhere close to that 4,000 square feet. The 30% of the backyard is still the restrictive number in most cases in Polk City. And then, just as an example, Safe Buildings recently approved a building with 12-foot sidewalls that the max peak barely got over 20 feet tall. So the, or no, barely over 16 feet tall. So in order for a building to be restricted by that 30-foot, it's going to be very rare.
So what were we, I read this a couple times. This is, what's in the packet is what it will be going for.
Correct.
So I guess I would ask to know what it, like, even, either a redline version that highlights the changes or something describing the intent of some of this, because, one, my understanding is most of the time, the restrictions based on the covenants, thank you, are, the stipulations in the covenants are more restrictive than what we have here.
Correct.
So when people can only have a, I think in my neighborhood, an eight-by-eight shed, that's because of the covenants and nothing. So I guess, thank you for this. I am a little concerned that this still comes up a lot, right? And so I want to make sure that we're, well, let me ask it this way. Why are we changing this? And then do we know how many lots it does affect if it's more of the estate type?
To my knowledge, there is nobody impacted by this, because this has been, so Safe Buildings went back through their building permits, and since 2008, I believe, they could not find one that would be impacted.
So why are we doing it then?
We were asked to clarify the code more specifically because there was a misconception on the average of the 16 feet in height. So this way, it tells a person the absolute maximum the whole building can be, because there's a formula based on sidewalls and, but the three buildings that have come up questioned in the, since 2018 that were built in town are all under the 4,000 square feet. One was 2,000, one was 3888, and one, the most recent building, was only 576 square feet. So again, it was just to protect the city to not, let's just say somebody has an acre lot, and all of a sudden they decide they want to put up two 4,000-square-foot buildings. The way our code is currently written, they could do that because it wouldn't take up more than 30% of the required rear yard. Because it's zoned as R1, R1A, et cetera, this limits it, so they could not exceed that regardless of that 30%. But ag would still be exempt from this. So if somebody's in an ag-zoned area, they could still build, say, a Morton building, whatever. But it's just to protect the residential districts and, and give a more clear cap. Most, to Travis's point, most normal lots, the quarter acre of a lot, is going to be capped at, what did you say?
Eight forty.
Eight forty.
So essentially, a four-car.
Right.
Morton.
No, I, I get that point. We have probably a higher percentage of irregular, because you said regular, lots that a lot of communities do. And so this comes up maybe a little bit higher, but what else, so.
And I guess what Jenny says, the baseline of the 30-foot maximum line that we added was there was some confusion about what average meant. And so it's to give city staff and building officials something to point to, like, this is your maximum, and then this is how we calculate.
And this would still allow for an RV to fit into a garage. It would still allow, you know, some of those things that people are trying to store out of sight to be in there without exceeding. So our single-family homes' maximum height, I think, is 35 feet, 35 or 36 feet. So again, we wanted to make sure an accessory structure would not exceed the maximum that we have for a residential home. Now, that doesn't mean it's every residential home, so if you have a one-story, your building could exceed that, but.
Well, I assume that this is from what I asked for.
It is.
Why this comes, but it doesn't answer the question. My main question is, how do we differentiate between a pole barn and a garage?
That'll come with the next code.
Yes.
That'll come with ordinance 2023-6000 that you'll be talking about later. It's in two separate parts of the code, so it has to be written as two separate ordinance.
30 feet, if you live in a single-house ranch like mine that has a peak of 14 feet, and you've got something 30-foot next to you, I don't want it in my neighborhood, and I don't know if anybody else does or not, but it's happening time and time again. This is not accomplishing what I asked for.
We did survey the other communities in the metro that we compare ourselves to all the time from property taxes and all the other things. And there's no other community that I could find that prohibits the size of the building based on the size of the house, height-wise. The only thing it does is base the size of the building on the size of the lot.
Okay, since you brought that up, do any of these other communities have 65-foot lots?
Yes, I think all, I think all of them would.
And they put pole barns up on them. I drive around a lot, in fact, that's my hobby now. I don't see a lot of them, but I do in Polk City. And there's more and more all the time, and I think it needs to stop.
So the average height requirement is still going to drive the boat on the, the height of the building? That's what's going to be.
No, wait a minute, I thought we were driving them.
The code, your code.
Yeah, and that's what we want to do, we want to change the code to prevent this.
So you're saying that the 16 feet in average height, in general, will be more restrictive than the 30 feet maximum peak? Because people aren't typically going to build a big skinny peaks.
Yeah. So your, your sidewalls would have to be exceedingly high.
So the most recent building that was built, for instance, that we, that brought all this about, is only a 576 square-foot building. It's 24 by 24, which is an average two-car garage. The reason it looks different is because the height of that particular building does go higher than all of the single ranch. So I tried to find code that I could say, okay, it's going to be based on these individual homes and the sizes of the homes, and I couldn't find any code to replicate, to offer you a recommendation. We would be the only community that I could find in the metro that would limit the size of a building based on the size of the home. And our code doesn't have a minimum for a home, I can't, I don't.
I would, I wish the builder was here so I could ask him why a 24 by 24 pole barn is an advantage over a 24 by 24 garage. What's the advantage?
So I think.
Had to cost more.
Do you, do you want us to talk about the next ordinance? Because I think that's going to answer Ron's questions and concerns.
Well, I don't know, we would have to ask Amy if we could.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have a public hearing now, so if that would, if the explanation will help, I don't see any reason not to go ahead and explain why you've got, got the second ordinance that helps on the first.
So the second ordinance, 2023-6000, essentially adds the R3, R4, and CTS districts, and then non-residential uses in the C1, R1, R1A, R2, and R2A districts to your code requirement, requiring dominance by permanency and strength of materials in proportion to the aesthetic characteristic of the architectural bowl. The, essentially, it is adding those districts to your, to be enforced with acceptable building materials as defined by your code. That specifically prohibits vertical metal siding, as well as sets minimum proportion requirements for stone and other acceptable alternatives within each zoning district. And then, so in, so that's in section one of the, of section 157.09. And in section two, we've added a line that reads, "All exterior wall areas of single-family or two-family residential dwellings and permitted accessory structures shall be in acceptable finished material as defined by section 157.0948. Up to 30% of the total wall area of a primary single-family or two-family residential dwelling may be an architectural panel system of fiber cement, solid wood, engineered wood, or cement." So it's still emphasizing the permanency and acceptable stone and stone alternate materials, while allowing for a reasonable concession for other types of wood or cement fiber products.
Can I stop you there for just a second?
Yeah.
So in summary, a pole building has, is built because it's cheaper today. This would make it to where you wouldn't be able to build a pole building because the siding would need actual structure to be held up. So you wouldn't have vertical metal siding anymore, and you wouldn't have any more pole barn accessory structures built in those residential districts.
And that's what you're.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you say a pole barn, you mean the, the, a building, a larger building with tin siding is what you're trying to avoid here? Okay.
I, I still don't like the height, that's just me.
What about the roof? What about the roof of those buildings? Can they still be steeled or just?
So the way your code reads is they are to be in the general architectural characteristic of the siding.
End of the home. So it's, we took it a little farther. Most covenants in the newer neighborhoods, they have very restrictive, it has to be the same paint color, it has to be this and that and the other. We basically took all this site plan regulations that we have applied to commercial and industrial areas, and we're now applying those within reason to the residential districts, saying that the architectural standards need to meet that particular development. So you can't build that building in an area where nothing else looks like that, there's nothing. And that prohibits specifically the material you're trying to avoid.
Shame on me for waiting so long, because there's a lot of.
And then there was one more cleanup item in this, which was just to clarify a.
Essentially, there was a codification error the last time the section went through, where somebody at some point flipped two numbers to where on-site plans, your code read that the maximum allowable was 40, but the maximum on average light level was 50. And so we went back and we flipped those numbers to make sense, where the average lighting across all of those, of that entire area is 40 with a maximum peak.
And that was specific for commercial, it's just while we were amending the chapter, we wanted to clean up that item as well.
Well, and since we're talking about commercial, we don't seem to want to talk, we didn't want to talk about the elephant room. Majority of those are used for business, even though they claim they are, they are.
Use is, use is another situation with the attorney that we can take up on those particular instances.
Let's just stick with these code issues.
So the second part makes sense, because essentially what I'm hearing is we're doing the same thing for the older neighborhoods that the covenants are doing for new ones. But I will say, and, and I didn't understand completely what we're doing here, but I, I, I hear more, when we're talking about outbuildings, I hear more of the, why can't I do this argument than I do, why, why are they allowed to do this, to do that, I don't say, so.
Legitimate question.
Yeah, so I get a little concerned about making these changes with, with that, with that in mind. Now, again, respect your point, and I'm not disagreeing with it necessarily, but what I am saying is, if we're elected to represent the people, and I have to, and it's a very small sample size, with one notable exception that I think we're all very familiar with from a couple of years ago.
Two, two.
Okay, and I have not heard about that, so, but I've, I've not asked like you have. You do a much better job of asking those questions than I do, quite honestly. But what I'm getting at is, I don't know that this is accomplishing what, what I think the will of the people is. With the will of the people. Making my point myself is stupid. So I.
I think it's just a council decision, because aesthetically, it's more appealing to make structures match the sightings, et cetera, of the house than it is to have a house that looks like this and a outstructure that looks like this. It's just an aesthetic thing.
I agree that it's an aesthetic thing, but that should manifest in, in the comments that I hear. And what I'm saying is that it doesn't. So with one exception, I've not heard of many complaints about things going up. I hear a lot more about, why can't, why can't I build what I want to build, rather than why were they allowed to build that thing that is not fitting in the neighborhood?
Well, we obviously talk to different people, because.
And that, and again, I'm, I'm not saying that I canvassed people enough to, to make that assertion super confidently, I'm just telling you what I.
Because I think, I think there's been three recently built out where they're one-acre lots. And honestly, they don't stick out like they do on a 65-foot lot. But still, I've had calls from people that say, those are businesses being run out of there, they're big, they don't look right, and I could be wrong on the number.
Well, but to Jenny's point, we're not addressing the usage here. So if the underlying problem is that it's stated as a residential purpose, but it's using commercially, I think, and, and that is a genuine problem, then we should address it.
But we're not doing it, cheaters shouldn't win.
Well, at another time. So, so we've hashed this out. And so we're going to go back to seven A, the first reading, and we'll have a motion to approve the first reading and a second.
Well, for you, I, sorry.
And then we can have further discussion.
Well, but I guess, I don't know that we've hashed it out, and I would ask that, unless we think there's a pressing need to table this for a little bit, because I'd like to do some more research and some more discussion with folks to understand where this is, is this, again, what people want, the direction that it's going. But that's just, we can go ahead if I'm the only one that thinks that.
Well, it's just, if, if it's what they want, or if it's what we allow, is that the right, like, what, what? We need to have parameters, and I understand we want to have feedback, but, so I'm, I'm fine with.
There are multiple ways, so we can.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about it in the second, third reading, I was going to say.
The only urgency was that it was brought to me.
Sure. Yeah, no, I.
But yeah, other than that, those, no.
I, I get what you're saying about there's people who want that, but it's going to boil down to the same thing with businesses and apartments and everything else. Fine with it, but not in my neighborhood, not in my backyard.
I totally agree, right? And, and again, and that's why I, I want to do some more talking. Because I, your point is, is valid and, and is going in a, a direction that I think would be beneficial. To your point, should we have had this a few years ago, probably, but.
If you're going to defer, do it as a motion to defer to a specific date, so you don't have to untable it to get it back to the agenda and, and come up with that specific date, so it's not languishing out there.
Okay, I, I don't want to stigmatize work that's been done. There are three potential readings here before it gets passed, so it's something that.
Shouldn't we first find out if the council wants to even defer, if we want to go ahead?
You'll do that by the motion to defer.
Or, or motion to proceed, I, I, I'm just.
Or if you're going to proceed, then a motion to approve the first reading. So you're, those are really your two choices.
You're just saying that instead of just a motion to table, a motion to defer until a specific date is easier from it.
From, because you have to have a motion first for the first reading, then you have to have a motion to table that reading, and then when you want to bring it back, you have to motion to untable. So it's just easier from a procedural standpoint to defer. If you're, if you're not going to want to vote on it tonight, then a motion to defer to a date certain. Otherwise, vote the first reading and, and do not waive the second and third.
Just to be clear, might maybe misplaced the notion of differing. But staff handled this well, it was sent out on Thursday, Chelsea followed up. My, 100% of my focus went to the budget, so any research issues are 100% on me not doing my job over the weekend. So I, I don't want that construed as this got in and wasn't prepared well or anything close to. I'm just, I didn't, I didn't do the research that I should have from Thursday till Thursday night. Trying to disperse now.
Okay.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Motion to approve the first reading. We'll move to second.
Second.
And roll call, vote.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Anderson.
Yeah.
Walters.
Yes.
And then we go to item one, which is the optional uh motion to waive the second and third readings. Uh so we had to get a motion and a second.
Motion to waive the second and third readings.
And a second.
And I'll tell you why I said that, because if we wait another four weeks, the way they built that last one, there could be six more. That's how fast that went up.
Okay, is this where we would have a motion to defer then?
No, it just you just it'll just be on the next. This motion to to waive the second and third died for lack of a second.
Right.
So it'll just be brought up at the next for the second reading and waiver, potential waiver of the third at the next.
Okay, so I've asked for a second twice and I have not received a second. So that's obviously what we're going to do. So then we'll move on to B then, which is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash six thousand, amending chapter one fifty seven site plan. But Travis, I was going to go to you, but we've already discussed that already. So we need a motion uh to approve the first reading of that ordinance and a second.
Second.
And roll call mode.
Anderson.
Yeah.
Walters.
Yes.
DeVore. Sarchet.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
So then we'll move on to B one, which is the optional waive second and third readings. And I'll ask motion and a second on that.
We'll move.
And a second, the second time. And there is no second. So then that automatically will move on. So then item C is Snyder and Associates, February twenty twenty three, engineering services invoicing the amount of nine thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars and seventy five cents. A motion and a second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yeah.
Walters.
Name.
DeVore. Sarchet.
Yes.
Moving on to item number eight, which is mayor proclamations. First one is um be it resolved that we proclaim National Library Week, April twenty three through twenty nine, twenty twenty three. During this week, we of course encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services. And the second official proclamation is for Arbor Day. We proclaim April twenty eighth, twenty twenty three as Arbor Day in the city of Pope City. And I encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well being of this in future generations. So those are our two proclamations. So we'll then move on to number nine, which is reports and particulars. And we'll begin with staff.
Um I just have the fire departments doing week from Tuesday, the eighteenth pizza delivery, smoke detector checks uh from five thirty to seven thirty. So people just need to call and order uh their pizzas to be delivered and it'll be delivered by the fire department.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Water main flushing the seventeenth through the twenty first. So it's all probably been through every year here for the last twenty something. So I think water main flushing.
Just a last reminder that the Friends of the Parks, their second annual five K is on Saturday, April twenty second. If you uh like to run a five K that morning or just come up and be part of the festivities, uh you're invited to. The show starts at ten.
Okay. While you're talking, Jason, the shade structure uh at Leonard Park that they've raised, successfully raised money for, is it timed right on?
Uh yeah, we're just kind of trying to figure out the concrete work aspect of it. We're hoping to have that installed spring, early summer, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you. So we will move on to Chelsea.
I have two things. Um I would like to congratulate Fire Chief Carla Hoagriff as being the first recipient of the Lynn Washburn Scholarship. Lynn Washburn uh was the former fire chief in Davenport, Iowa. And she has set up a scholarship to provide uh to female fire and EMS leaders. The scholarship provides full tuition and travel costs to the Missouri Valley Division Fire Chiefs Annual Conference. So please help me congratulate Chief Hoagriff on this accomplishment. I have one more. Um so as most people know, in town, RagBri will be coming through Pope City on July twenty sixth this summer. Um the city is going to be hosting monthly public information RagBri meetings and we'll list those in minutes for anyone interested. The first one will be held Thursday, April twentieth at four PM at Luana Savings Bank. We are looking for volunteers for RagBri. Um for more information, please visit the city's website.
Okay, great. And Jamie, I didn't, you didn't have anything for staff report? Chief?
No.
Okay, good. Uh so council members?
I'd like to start. First, I'd like to recognize our honorable mayor for going out and cleaning up the road, taking care of a mess. Some of the things that were brought up at park commission that needs to be done and going to try and he's going to try and encourage other groups to do so. I think big move and thank you for that. Really appreciate it. And then I was fortunate enough to attend the downtown assessment meeting, is that what it was called? And very informative, lots of real good ideas, lots of things I like. But with everything else that's going on, I see it's going to be hard to implement some of those things, but I hope we can get at least a few of the minor ones done to move forward.
Well, I all this positivity, but in a.
Especially where it's coming from, right?
Thanks. Well, I'll highlight Chief Hoagriff, say congratulations again first. I can get to my focused assessment. So assessments came out. I I just want to um recognize the impact of of those and make sure that people know. Um I think it's stated in there, but there's a dispute process. So I would urge everybody who has concerns about their assessment um and the amount of increase that I think was across the board in town, twenty plus percent to one, be prepared and educate yourself on what that appeal or dispute process is. I forget what they lay, but um as someone who has gone through it before and not always been uh just be prepared. Uh I would say and and the second thing is um that again, we we talked about this number time with the budget, but it's a convoluted process. So the assessments that you got notice of today won't take effect for our budget for next year for a number of reasons, those disputes being one of them. But I I do think that it is something that that when the uh the basis of the property tax calculations goes up to the degree that it is, we need to to lower our levy rate because of that basis increase. So um that's a next year question um for us and and a bunch of things legislative changes are are going to come uh uh be impactful between now. So anyway, just want people to um you've got every right to uh challenge what they're saying your home was valued at. Would encourage everybody. That's worth their time.
Anybody else? Thank you. Uh I would just um add, thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. And I'd just like to call out the twelve U soccer team who helped pick up all that trash um on Saturday. And uh I've identified a lot of different sections of the community that need trash pickup. So uh like Ron said, we we'd like to start thinking about other groups who might like to help the mayor go out and pick up trash. Because I'm more than happy to do that. Uh also, the downtown assessment was uh an incredible opportunity for us to have uh some odd people from outside come in and and take a look at our community with what we like to call fresh eyes. And they gave us some really great ideas and I do implement some of those as well. And then I just want you all to know, I know the Four Seasons Festival folks are working very hard and we appreciate that very much. The RagBri folks are working very, very hard and we appreciate that very much as well. It takes a lot of volunteers to pull these things off. And I'd encourage anybody who wants to volunteer to just reach out. So those are three things that I have. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned until April tenth. Thanks, everyone.